Good evening, I'll call this meeting to the Cartersville City Council to order. Please stand for implication in place.
May I have your attention? Let us pray. Our Father which art in heaven, once again we assemble in these chambers to do the business of Cartersville, Bartow County, Georgia. We ask you for guidance and direction as to make decisions that affect the citizens of our city. Be with us, leaders, and guide us in the direction that you have us to go, and we can't go wrong. We ask these blessings and all blessings in the Son Jesus' name, amen.
Blessed are the children of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Oldham, the role, please.
Here, Mark, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Coon, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Sam Ren, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Meredith. Our first order of business is approval of the council meeting minutes from our August 1st meeting. Council, you've had these for a few days now. Had an opportunity to look them over and make any necessary changes. If there are any to be made, now would be the time to recommend those. And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. First item is Brock.
Yes, this is a resolution to acknowledge efforts of the Cartersville City Council's ongoing compliance with the Department of Community Affairs in relation to the community development block grant program we participate in, and your approval of the resolution is recommended.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Ms. Brock.
This is the second reading for the brunch bill Sunday sales. It's to amend the code of ordinance for the city of Cartersville to allow for Sunday sales of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises. Also authorizes a referendum in the general election to provide for an adoption in the effective date. This is the second reading, and your approval is recommended.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Mayor, just so you know, if the referendum does fail, the ordinance does not go into effect.
You're kidding.
Letting you know.
Thank you.
Get out and vote.
Any other questions or comments? And if not, a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, you have a couple of second readings of, actually, a second reading of ordinance for us for correcting frontage requirements.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, this is a cleanup or a correction in the ordinance. It corrects the street frontage requirements. Basically refers it back to the adopted zoning ordinance, frontage requirements. It is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading, and this amendment is recommended for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or comments for Randy? If there's no other discussion, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have Randy, the next item, first reading of ordinance.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment by the American Legion. They're looking to replace their currently, their old sign that's apparently starting to fall down. They're looking to replace it with an electronic sign to better be able to change the message for different events and other things like that. However, our current sign ordinance does not allow electronic signs on MLK. Their proposed text amendment is to add MLK to the list of roads where electronic signs are allowed. With that, the Planning Commission did have a public hearing on it, did have a lot of discussion on it, and did forward it with a recommendation for approval. I do believe the applicant is present for this application.
Would it be appropriate to ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
Can I ask the applicant a question? Come forward, please.
Yeah, you're about to open a public hearing.
Oh, I'm getting a public hearing for a first reading of ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'll open up the public hearing for the first reading of the ordinance. If you would, state your name and address for our clerk, please.
Tim Gilstrap, my new beginning signs filed South Gomber Street.
My question, Tim, was relative. In the work session, we talked a little bit about the length, the size of that district. And I think council, some of the discussion was about perhaps having that district put from Felton Street to, is that Roosevelt? And I didn't know if that would cause any hardship or if that would still suit the needs of what the American Legion was wanting to do.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was the only question. Does anybody else have any other questions?
And you're considering putting the new sign at the entrance this time, right?
It will be at the entrance.
And sir, can you give your name and your address?
Glenn Thompson, Chairman of the Board of Directors for Bartow American Legion Home and Memorial.
Thank you.
And one last thing.
Yes, sir.
I know your sign's always been down at the end, and you're moving it in. Was there a specific reason why you had to have an electronic sign as opposed to just going back?
That's where the previous sign was. It was actually taken down by storm damage.
Okay.
Okay. The fair sign is an additional sign that's on the property. By going to the electronic sign, it would allow us to use one sign and to announce what's going on at our Legion post and throughout the community.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Do you have any plans to sell space on your sign?
I don't think the sign's that large, but no. The long-term measures, no.
So, to sell space in the electronic part?
No, sir. That's strictly for Legion and activities that the American Legion is involved in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak about this, since I've opened up a public hearing? And I'll close the public hearing. This is the first reading. We will take this up for final consideration at our next meeting. We will move on. Mr. Gilliam.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Coming to you for approval with an agreement with Athletic Fields, Inc. to renovate George Johnson and Bill Bruce Fields at Hicks Park. Rudy York and Joe Frank Harris Fields were done previously by this company. The total cost of field renovations is $33,884. The city will split the cost with our baseball provider, which is Cartersville Little League. The Little League will pay $16,000, and the city is asking to be able to be approved to pay the remaining $17,884.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. That next item, we are going to remove from the agenda, and we'll bring that up for consideration at a later date. Garbage truck purchase, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Solid Waste needs to replace an older garbage truck. We want, we put out bids for a 20-yard rear loader. We received bids from six companies, and we recommend the low bidder, Carolina Environmental Systems, for a price of $145,582. This is a budgeted item, and it's going to be purchased through GMA Lease Boot.
Thank you. Council, any questions or discussion? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve the purchase of the garbage truck using the GMA Lease Boot.
Yes, second.
Thank you for that fine motion. That's second?
Yes.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Thank you. We also need to repair a claw truck that we use for picking up yard waste and, you know, storm debris, and it has a lot of different uses. But the main components of, basically, we have to replace the claw and part of the pump that powers that claw. Our garage is going to do it. The parts and labor total is estimated at $18,313.61.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, you've got the next item, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The gas system needs to purchase a filter. This is for the Transco delivery point. And this comes from a sole-source provider, Green Country Filter Manufacturing. And it is a cost of $6,487, and we recommend purchasing this filter from them. And this is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions? Michael on this. And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Porter, you've got the next couple, please.
Mayor and Council, first item is the workers' compensation subsequent injury trust funds, annual fee that we pay based on our claims. In 2018, the total cost of this is $5,309.63.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Dan.
Yes, sir. The Bartow County Motorola radio invoice is the second quarter of 2019. This is part of the new radio system. We have countywide, city departments that use this. This share of this costs $11,520.36.
Questions, comments, or motions, Council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt. Snuck up to the front row tonight, honestly.
Every once in a while.
That's right.
I'm the Mayor and Council. The property taxes received for the Cartersville MNO property tax collections are used for general city government operations such as police, fire, recreation, public works, et cetera. The proposed 2019 millage rate is 3.259 mils. This is above the rollback rate of 2.106 mils. As a result, the city is required to hold three public hearings for the public to voice their opinions. This will be considered the third public hearing for this particular item, and I recommend the, I recommend council approval of the Cartersville MNO property tax millage rate of 3.259 mils for 2019.
Thank you. Questions for Tom on this item? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing relative to the Cartersville MNO millage rate for 2019. Anybody wishing to step forward, to speak for or against, may do so at this time. I need you, please, step on up. And if you would, please, again, anybody that steps forward to give your name and your address, and that's for our clerk, it needs to be included in our minutes.
I'm very good speaking in a public forum, but I brought some facts and figures with me.
You're doing fine so far.
Hi, I'm Dwayne Ange, excuse me, Margaret Angelo. I go by Dwayne, however. And I live in the Pettit Creek area there in the reserve. We are recent city people here. We've been here since September 2017. Now, within the time that we've been here, and this is on the tax, we have received tax bills more than eight times of what we paid in our previous county. Eight times. And you're talking about another millage rate. Now, I don't know what the difference was in the rollback, because that may have been before my time. But if there was a rollback that was voted in at some point in time, it was warranted. And now you're talking about, you don't want that rollback to happen, and you don't want to even leave it at the current rate. You want to take it higher than the current rate. You don't allow any kind of assessments, I mean, not the assessments, but the exemptions against your city taxes, which complexes me altogether, because according to the state you do, you allow two. You allow $5,000 for your homestead, and then $28,000 for senior, which is also ridiculous. But that, you don't control, I don't think you control the school board, do you? I didn't think so. We've already had a meeting with them. But being seniors 65 and above, and this was our retirement house, and we come into tax rates such as this that we had no idea that one county over ran something entirely different than what this city and this county does. And it's phenomenal. And when you're talking eight times, not two, not three, but eight times of what you were paying. And that includes school tax that you didn't have to pay in another county, because 65 and over there is exempt. Plus, there's also disability that's available there, which I am. And I can't combine those here. I could combine those there. That would make a big difference on our tax bill as well. But you don't really allow stacking of discounts. So here again, I don't understand why there would be a millage rate. I don't, I haven't reviewed your budgets. I did get a copy, I pulled them down offline. And not knowing what the previous was, not knowing what the expenditures are, not knowing what you're up against, other than what we, hold on just a second, others than what are just earned. As far as my husband and I, we are hemorrhaging money in this community. And we have to make a decision, and we're going to make it really fast, of whether we continue to be residents here. And that's something that maybe the city needs to consider. Seniors that's over 65 years old should not have to be paying these kind of taxes.
Which kind of taxes are you speaking of?
All of the taxes. School taxes, no exemptions on the city taxes, because you say, well, you took it on the county, so you can't take it on the city. Well, guess what? The Department of Revenue, say you do. I printed down from their website. Their website says it's allowed county and city. The city hasn't allowed me that. And when I called to inquire on these things, I've been told it's double. If you're getting it on county, you're not going to get it on city, even though the state of Georgia's not aware of that. This is the Department of Revenue for the state of Georgia. So maybe that's one question someone can answer for me here. It's, why don't I get a homestead? I live in the city. That's where my home is. Why don't I get a homestead on my city? Can anybody answer that question for us?
You talking about on your property tax or on your school tax?
Property.
Well, you're getting $5,000 off, right?
No. You do not get $5,000 on the city if you're getting $5,000 on the county. But that's not what the Georgia Department of Revenue tells you. So I'm asking you, why aren't they?
You could take it off the city and just not get it off the county.
You're missing the point.
You want both.
I want homestead, whether, if the county takes it, the city should take it as well. Because the city here thoroughly confuses me. The county allows at least a senior $40,000 on their school taxes. The city doesn't. And aren't we all the same? Aren't we all the same community? Why are there differences? County and city.
Yes, my understanding that there's a $28,000 exemption versus a $40 in the county. And quite honestly, that's something that we were looking at. I've had a conversation over the last month to go like, why are those different? And years ago, both the city and the county were at 28, and then the county decided to move it to 40. That was some time ago, and it never got done in the city. So that's something, that's something, I don't have an answer why, because I just found out about it a couple months ago, and been, it's one thing.
Well, I found out about it almost two years ago. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. It's just that, you know, when you get to a level, at this level for us, it's dark. And it's hard to go out and brag about your community when you're withstanding this type of financial stress. I mean, our retirement funds have done nothing but bleed money since we've been here. We don't understand that. County and city supposed to work together. They're supposed to be the same. Yeah, unfortunately, we live in the city, so we have to pay both taxes. But we weren't even aware of that when we moved here either. We thought it was all the same. And getting no deductions against city makes absolutely no sense to us. Our house is in the city. We should get the $5,000, just like we should get it on Bartow County. And $5,000 is very meager compared to surrounding counties.
Now, you are aware that the only millage that this group right here puts on you is 3.29. And I would be shocked to find a community that's an eighth of that millage.
You would be shocked to find a quarter, I'm sorry?
The millage that this council puts on your property tax is now going to be 3.29.
Yeah, but that's from-
All of the others are from other entities. And you're saying you're paying eight times in this community?
I'm paying eight times tax, living where I live, versus my last community.
Yeah, but our millage at the city is 3.29.
That is speaking of the schools. That's speaking of your cities, and that's speaking of your counties.
We're only responsible for the city MNO.
Okay. Taking just the city numbers then. Just the city numbers from our past county. We're paying four times of what we were paying there, because you don't give senior. And you don't mix the senior with the disability.
You had a senior exemption on your property taxes or the school taxes?
Both. When you get senior, you get it across the board. When you're disability, you get disability across the board. When you're a homeowner, you get homestead across the board. And you can check that with Cobb County if you'd like. Because I pulled my prior tax bill to move in here to make sure that I was correct in what I would be stating tonight. So I'm not for the increase. I still wouldn't, I still don't understand the increase, other than, like I said, after just sitting through this meeting here, you've thrown a lot of money around just tonight. And you've pricked every one of it unanimously. So maybe you've done quite a bit of questioning ahead of time of these things prior to this meeting.
That's how we operate. We get this information on a Tuesday, okay? We look at the information. It's all budgeted. And then we have a work session that started at 6 o'clock. We went through every bit of this. So that we get to this meeting, everybody's already well-informed and already gotten everything hashed out. So it does run rather smoothly in these meetings.
Well, I have to admit, though, that's quite a bit of money that you guys have spent tonight.
Relative to what?
Well, let's see. We're talking $145,000. We're talking $18,000. You're talking almost $6,500. You're talking a little over $5,000, and a little over $11,000. That's quite a bit of money to spend in one night, guys. And I'm sure that you've got, like I said, you've had meetings, you have discussed all this. But that's a lot of money, of other people's money that you're spending.
It's all of our money, because we all live here.
I know, but it's other people's money. Okay?
Yes.
So, I mean, my point is, I don't think the millage rate should go up unless you can tell me something tonight that would warrant that, other than you have more insurance costs, so do I. You have more expenses, so do I. I just got through telling you, just my tax expense alone is costing me eight times to live here. And that doesn't pick up the other things, as far as the other expenses to live here. So I'm just saying, I don't think it's warranted unless I can be convinced that it's warranted. And I just wanted to speak against it. So those were my rationales tonight. So thank you for your time listening to me.
And one last thing, Dave. So you buy city gas and water and electric, right? Are those more competitive than where you came from?
Yeah, no.
That's amazing.
Okay. If you want to bring up that topic, I'll discuss it.
No, but what I'm looking at is-
I didn't think that I could bring up that topic.
I'm sorry, this is a hearing on the millage rate. So if you want to have a conversation on the side about utility rates, that's fine.
That's the reason I didn't go to that area.
Thank you.
But I do want to say one thing. In regards to when you're asked about where this millage is going, you're going to start to see a lot more streets being paved, because we were behind on that, and that was something that we've adjusted. Hence, the reason we did have to have an adjustment on the millage.
Okay, well, just using what you just said. You have twice, not twice, you have more citizens now than you've ever had. They spend more development in this area. You have developed more businesses within the last two years that I've been here, and you still feel the need to raise the millage. And this is just since I've been here. The population, at this point, is probably the highest that it's ever been. And you still feel the need for a millage. So that's pretty much where I'm coming from. And I'm just against it. And I just appreciate you guys' time listening to me. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but it would be on a personal basis for me. I can't talk to the, for the community, but I can tell you how it affected me.
Well, I appreciate you being here, and thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
We'll continue the public hearing. Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. Going once, going twice. And I'll close the public hearing for that, and turn it over to council for their consideration.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, the next item, please.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, the city of Cartersville School System has recommended to their board to lower their school system's 2019 millage rate to 14.567, I'm sorry, 14.576 mils. This is the rollback rate for 2019. The city council approves the school board's recommended tax millage rate for the city residents where all the property taxes collected for this are turned over to the city school system. I recommend approval of the Cartersville City School System property tax millage rate of 14.576 mils for 2019.
Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for the Cartersville City School System millage rate. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item, Mr. Reinhardt.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, the Cartersville Business District, or bid, is made up of the downtown Cartersville Business District. The Downtown Development Authority works with the local businesses to use the funds provided in this tax millage rate to improve the downtown area. The DDA board requests the city council to approve their recommended bid to that property tax millage rate of 1.789 mils. This is the rollback rate for the bid. I recommend approval of the Cartersville Business Improvement District property tax millage rate of 1.789 mils for 2019.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open up a public hearing for the Cartersville Business Improvement District millage rate. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. GEO Parks and Rec Bond Millage Rate.
Yes, sir. The council, the city of Cartersville, approved a referendum in November of 2014 authorizing the city to issue bonds to be used to pay for renovations and improvements throughout the park system. The bonds were issued for the 10-year payback period. In order to make the scheduled bond payments on a yearly basis, the city is assessing a property tax millage of 0.861 mils. The rollback for this was 0.9 mils. The millage rate for this will be a fluctuation over the 10-year period and will need to be set with enough millage rate, large enough millage rate, to cover the semi-annual bond payments. I recommend the approval of the Cartersville GEO Parks and Recreation Bond Tax Millage Rate of 0.861 mils for 2019.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. I'll open up a public hearing for the GEO Parks and Recreation Bond Millage. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for consideration. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for consideration.
I have one question. Tom, that was a 10-year, how many years are we into that?
We're leaving the fourth or fifth year.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Tom, I'm going to have you go ahead and do the financial report and then we have some items to add to the agenda.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I will be presenting the June 2019 financial information and comparing it to June 2018. I would like to basically let y'all folks know that this is the year-end report. What I'm presenting tonight is in a cash basis and as the year-end process is completed, these numbers will change, some more than others. Those changes will include such items as depreciation expense, bond accruals, revenue accruals, and fixed assets. In the general fund, revenues increased over last June by $1.4 million, expenses increased by $1.1 million. Areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis are the local office and sales tax have a slight increase there of about $300,000 and billing permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about $76,000. The water and super fund revenues increased over last June by $3.9 million, expenses increased by $409,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased debt service expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last year by $3 million, expenses increased by $7 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, increased debt service, and increased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $1.5 million, expenses increased by $345,000. This is due to increased personnel costs, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase electricity, and increased capital expenditures. In the stormwater fund, revenues decreased over last year by $16,000, expenses increased by $407,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Solid Waste Fund, revenues decreased over last year by $63,000 and expenses increased by $141,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the Fiber Optics Fund, revenues decreased over last year by $15,000, expenses decreased by $84,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Like I said, this will, these numbers will change as the year-end close processes is done and they will be reported to you later on by the auditors.
Okay, thanks. Any questions from Tom on the financial report? Anything to add on that? Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got three items to add to council. We went over a work session. If you'll entertain a motion right now to add those items to the agenda.
Motion to add those three.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chief McCann, you've got the first item, please.
Good evening. It's the time of year again where we have to submit a federal annual report to the Department of Justice. It's due on August 31st and basically the report shows how much money we took in and how much we spent. We took in $354,272, spent $219,893. And I am requesting that the council authorize the mayor to sign this report so it can be submitted by August 31st.
Thank you. Questions for the chief on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Dan, you've got the next item, please, sir.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we sent out proposals for medical insurance benefits for proper services, received seven proposals back. After reviewing those, the committee interviewed four firms and after going through those four interviews, we selected one digital to become the broker for the city. This recommendation is made effective on September 1st for the age of record. This will be for our medical insurance, our vision insurance, Medicare Senior Supplement, cancer insurance, accident insurance, and flexible spending accounts. It's recommended for your approval.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Council, this last item, we've got a resolution. City staff and along with myself and the rest of you, we're concerned about the recent issues relating to painting over existing non-painted brick, issuance of demolition permits, sidewalks, drive cuts, setbacks, fire safety regulations, subdivision of, excuse me, subdivision of contributing properties, parking on said properties, fencing and screening, signage, compatibility of new architecture with contributing properties in some of the historic districts, frontage requirements, lot size, preservation, residential nature of certain historic districts within the city of Cartersville. So concerned that existing development regulations and zoning ordinance may not adequately address these issues, I think we have determined that it might be in the best interest of the city of Cartersville and promote the general public welfare, health, and happiness as well as the historical integrity of the Cherokee-Caswell Historic District and the West End Historic District to adopt a 120-day moratorium on the issuance of demolition permits, applications of variances to the Board of Zoning Appeals, rezoning applications, and the application and appeal of so dividing or any contributing property within those two districts. And so we can certainly discuss that if there's further clarification needed or if not, I would ask for a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would request you ask for public comment on that.
Okay, I will do that. I'll open up the floor for public comment on this proposed resolution. And seeing none, I will close that public hearing and turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that needs to come forth, council, this evening? Seeing none, shall I make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Not get her up in front of that guy. Stay cool.